Hello, this is School Committee Update with Carrie Norman, current Chair of the School Committee. Hi Carrie over there.
Good morning.
Good morning. So since we're a little bit apart, I'll use that as an excuse. Can you tell me, give me a little school committee bio for yourself? When were you first elected?
This is my seventh, my fourth term, my seventh year. My third year being Chair. It is our family's 15th year in the school, the public, Summerville Public Schools. I, like you, have a 2019 high school graduate and I have a junior at the high school now. And I can say, the evolution of the schools over those last 15 years has been mind-boggling. But what we have had to do in terms of evolving in the last six months has been more than mind-boggling. It's incredible.
I don't doubt that. Is there any single obstacle or challenge in dealing with COVID safety that you've, you were not expecting to be, you expected it to be large, but it has been even more massive than could have been.
Okay, yeah. I don't even know where to begin. I would say that the thing that has been the most challenging is the lack of both federal and state coherent guidance. That every district has been sort of left to their own to determine. We've been instructed for safe buildings, but without a matrix of what that means. There has been surprise announcements from DCE on Friday afternoons and changing things that we didn't expect. And so
That's the department, can you say what that is?
Department of Elementary and Secondary Education. Jeff Riley is the Commissioner. It has been, I would say locally, the partnerships between our community members, our community partners, the city, the schools, our teachers, our educators, our parents. Students' participation, you know, we've been meeting with teen empowerment, hearing from students, listening broadly. I would say I have been incredibly impressed and touched by Summerville coming together in ways that we never knew that we would have to come together. And is as frightening as these uncertain times are for all of us in terms of employment, public health and education. I have also continually been impressed and touched by the true moments of humanity, both large and individual. It has been.
Is there a specific, when you say touched, I mean, that's a very powerful word. Were there specific interactions with families or students?
So when we closed last March, we were the first district to go out. We went out on a Wednesday. By Friday, by the next Monday, the governor had closed all the schools. Our community jumped into action, right? Our family liaisons, which we have since made full time because we realize the magnitude of work. They jumped in. I mean, when I say our staff, our teachers, while we, our administrators and principals were coming up with, how are we going to do this educationally? Our staff was charged and they came to it readily. We need to, this is humanity first. Right now, we need to check in with every kid. And so that has happened.
So how have you done that? Because that's one of the, I would think hardest components of this whole thing. Has there been outreach to every family, every student?
Yes. So in the, we have learned a lot, I would say, in the spring. That was the, so there's a, that was the number one. While we were, while we were still sorting out the remote education, we had attendance officers, deans of students, any of the student support, our family liaisons, literally going to houses. We also had teachers reaching out individually to students. And we created a dashboard to make sure, to account for every single student. And so this communication had to do with, do you have a device at home? Do you have connectivity? Do you have food? I mean, we went out on Wednesday by, that Monday morning, we were doing meals, grab and go meals.
So are you saying that every student has internet access now for remote learning? Or
I would say that
process of getting it?
I would, so here's the thing that COVID has so clearly, made so crystal clear for, to me, is that our lives are deeply intertwined in ways that we never expected and that the individual needs of each family and student is so unique. So does every student 100%? I can't say that, no. But what I can say, I mean, it's, you know, it's from some of our families who are able to just do it, great. But to get connectivity, it was not uncommon. We had a three-bedroom apartment and some of our families are, there's a whole family in each apartment. So when we got a free Comcast account, right, Comcast needs, it didn't compute. It's not just one account for the whole apartment. We want, you know, for each bedroom. And so then we were distributing hotspots. I mean, it has been innovation writ large and and there's some kids that we have lost contact with or have moved away. I can say, I've spoken to several Soli councilors, members. If you wanted to do Wi-Fi across the city, that would solve a lot of problems wholesale. And because we've been doing it student by student by student by student by family. And it's the right thing to do in this circumstance because they can't learn without the connectivity, especially as we're starting this year remote. But it is, it is certainly difficult. And, and when I say, a friend of mine who was one of the family liaisons, I mean, she, she opened up the back of her minivan and it was like a mobile unit, right? There's milk cartons that don't need refrigeration. There were diapers. There was wipes. There was disinfecting supplies. There was school supplies. I mean, it's
It's beyond just establishing a learning environment.
Oh, 100%.
Do you think, is this, do you think this is how other districts are handling it as well? Or does it depend on the demographics of the district? Or, because this is, this is having to bite off a lot.
100%. I mean, there's, long before there was COVID, we had created the Children's Cabinet in Summerville. Laura Petone and I represent the School Committee. So it's city, school and community partners, Cambridge Health Alliance, CAS. All of these relationships that were already in place to try to deliver increased wraparound services for families. Thank God, we had already established those relationships because when this emergency, this health emergency kicked in, we were able to, we already had those, we knew each other. We knew what people, there were systems in place. So there was a network in place. There was beautiful things. People were stepping up to help in ways that we didn't expect. Beautiful things, which does, art supplies became a diaper distribution center and it still is.
That's in Magoon Square, right? It's a storefront in Magoon Square.
Yes.
And they used to gather art supplies for teachers. So they just sort of shifted to whatever the need was?
Yep. And they, they still are preparing supplies for home. This is what I mean. There was just so many moments where I literally was, my breath was taken away. Not to say that it's all been easy. I mean, I think COVID has certainly hit our families, families and students of color much harder. It has, I don't know anyone who hasn't been touched by it, whether it's immediately themselves, their family or a neighbor. But I think everyone knows someone who has had it. And the weird thing about this disease, I have a friend who's 92-year-old mother, was nauseous for a day and a half and then tested positive and was out walking a mile three days later. And then people close to us, members of our community, our school community, young and healthy, in the hospital for months. So it is
I know someone who, I think she was one of the first to die, who was in her 80s and who came across with the energy level of someone in their 20s. And it just, it kind of didn't compute and it was so fast. So anyway, I don't want to upset you.
No, 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 no.
You've had, you've had more of this on your plate than
It has been an intense summer. Normally at the School Committee, we don't meet in the summer. We've met almost every week. And I am on the, the school and the city are meeting twice a week on reopening schools. And all of the logistics that go into that from, you know, we've contracted an engineering firm that has gone through all of the buildings, all of the different parts of the buildings. We haven't gotten their full report yet. I don't know that other districts are going to this same level. I would say our mayor has been more conservative and cautious than other districts. So
So can we go back a little bit? I'm glad we started with, with sort of the human side of it. But if you could go back to the process part of it, which is also interesting. So the state required all districts to come up with three different models for kids returning to school given the virus. One is, one model was to be totally in-person education. One was a hybrid of in-person and remote learning. And one was all remote. And Summerville started out doing, thinking hybrid, but then switched to only remote. When and why did that happen?
So we actually were one of the first districts before we even submitted the plan. We took wholly in-person off the table. If you look at a number of factors, we are extremely dense.
Did that, didn't they?
Yeah, but we, they did it in their plans. We have been trying to be as transparent as possible. We were going to say, wait until we submitted a, you know, an elaborate report to the state to tell families, going back entirely in person is off the table. The age of our buildings, the density of our buildings, the, our student enrollment has been going up. It didn't make sense. So we took that off the table even before submitting our plan to the state. Currently, we have a hybrid plan, a phased-in hybrid. And we're starting remote for for safety reasons, right? Our number one, as much as I care about the education and all of our educators do, this is a health crisis. And so until we know things like ventilation of the buildings, what we can mitigate, what we can reduce the risk of, and also have surveillance testing in place, we can't safely open the buildings. The state did come up with this very simplified one metrics, whatever the symbol of that is, you know, red, green, yellow.
Yes.
One data point is not, in no way reflects the complexity of this disease. But also, we're, we abut several districts that are in the red, right?
Yes. So Summerville, I think right now is yellow.
Yes.
So, and that means it has four or fewer, I have to look this up, four or fewer COVID cases per 100,000 people, is that right?
Is it 100, no, is it per thousand? It could be 100,000. No, you're right. Sarah, I apologize.
Okay, no, that's all right. The point is
Yes.
that we're low and then places like Everett and Chelsea have, have
Revere.
higher caseloads. So that's, that's what you were saying.
Yes. I think, I don't know, I don't think Medford's in the red. They might be in the yellow. So, you know, there isn't a wall around us. And our teachers and our staff live in surrounding districts, right? So we couldn't rely on what it is in Summerville because we are a porous community, people coming in and out. So that we need to be able to say with confidence, what is the safety of our buildings? And how do we do testing and contact tracing? If someone were to test positive, we would need to isolate, you know, for the safety. So it's safety first, 100%. We have come up with, I think, a very robust remote learning plan right now. We have been negotiating intensely with the STA and all of our unions twice a week, I will say.
Twice a week, wow.
Oh, there has been no summer. There has been no summer. And we did summer, you know, we still did summer school for
I didn't even realize that till I was preparing for this.
Yeah.
That the summer school happened. I mean, that's pretty remarkable.
Spring had to be reinvented. Summer school also had to be reinvented and carried on. And then, and planning for the fall. So there is this, the Summerville, our reopening plan is on the website. We have come to a very tentative agreement, and I want to emphasize tentative agreement, with the Summerville Teachers Union, which represents the Paris, the teachers scale, but that's a separate contract. And so I believe they are scheduling their ratification vote for Thursday. And School Committee is scheduled to meet again at 8:30 on Friday morning.
So what is this ratification of the plan or of?
So we have a plan, but because it changes, it's called impact bargaining. You have to negotiate with your teachers, the specifics of it. So scheduling hours, live teaching, non-live teaching, breaks, professional development time. I mean, I think what's been so confusing for families is all these districts have been announcing their plans. But until you've negotiated it with your unions to actually implement it, it's not really done. And so
The plan was 82 pages long.
Yes, it was.
Reading, even just reading the plan was an effort.
So In a very collaborative effort. I, I and a lot of the other, a lot of the district staff were all working on it. I, the Google Doc was alive and well and very active. I mean, you could log in at 10 o'clock at night or as I like to at 5:30 in the morning and there would be other people working on it. It is, the amount of work that has been done is truly impressive because it is towards the effort of how do we do the best for kids in a situation where there are no great options? There is no great path forward. How do you do the most effective educating with an eye for equity? I mean, what we know about COVID is that it's affecting our families and students of color in different ways, more profoundly. So that our special education students, there's a lot of services that can't be done effectively remotely. Some of them can't even be done remotely. Our English language learners, there's, there's populations that we have prioritized coming back first because of the greater need. And that's where, the difference between equity and equality. So we're not, it'll look different for different populations.
I see. So will there be any in-person or a different model for some of those, they're called vulnerable groups, right? Will there be any in-person instruction or I'm not sure I'm
So I would also put the younger kids, the younger children who should not be, yeah, absolutely. That is, it's a critical time where their learning, language acquisition is, in their brains are so pliable and absorbing. And being in front of screens is not the most effective.
Can you imagine your boys? I mean, I want to talk about what this is actually going to look like. Is it six hours a day? Is that the plan of instruction remotely?
It depends, it changes with ages, right? It's age, so the younger ones, and this is, still has to be ratified. So this, we haven't put out the schedules to families. And I appreciate their patience and, and their frustration. But it needs to be, we need to have, the union and the School Committee both need to sign off on it. The framework of it, it would be less time for, on screens for the younger ones. We've also working with RAC and Community Schools to add in-person outdoor activities because so much of learning at that age is actually through play. And then the hours would increase as the kids get older.
So I know it hasn't been ratified, but the roughly, how many hours are we talking for?
I would say the younger one.
Third grade or second grade or?
One to two, at least in the beginning. And then as we progress through the, as time goes on and if teachers, we, there's a lot, you know, we have to trust our educators.
Imagine, I mean, I have a son who is perfect, as most people know. And I just can't imagine requiring him when he was in first grade and it was so hard for him to write a sentence. He just didn't want to do it.
Yeah.
I just can't imagine sitting on your butt and attending to the screen without, you know, all the video overstimulation. So, so that's why it's going to start out with fewer hours?
Fewer hours, certainly for the younger ones. There will not be any student that will be on, expected to be, or a teacher to be expected to be on a screen for, from 8 to 2:30. There's, I hate the jargon in the education world, synchronous, which means live teaching. Asynchronous means it could be independent work. It could be any number of things. So that, and you know, the high school have a different schedule. The high school will have blocks of time. If you were a parent, there was a, they've done some information sessions. So instead of going through the seven classes a day that our older sons, our sons did, breaking it into three longer blocks of time, one week, three longer blocks the next week, alternating. I mean, it is, when I say education is being reinvented, yes.
Yeah. So there's so much I want to ask you. Let's, let's just, we have, we're getting low on time, but let's start with the buildings.
Yes.
The, the buildings are old. And as the head of the Teachers Union said, STA said, some of the classrooms don't have windows. Some have windows that don't open. And so the ventilation and the airflow vary. And I didn't even understand at first that the virus can linger in the air. So that airflow is important for reducing, you know, people spreading the virus. So what, there's this assessment being done by a private engineering firm. When is that due?
So there's a preliminary report, I think we're expecting the whole thing in this, I want to say, well, they said two weeks, so by the end of next week, but
That's pretty soon.
Well, and it makes, you know, they, they're really, when I say we're looking at buildings. So, and I've learned more about air exchange rates and filters than I ever thought I would need to know. When I, it's been incredible. But when we look at a building, so some of our buildings are newer, right? You've got, you've got older ones like the old high school. It doesn't make sense to put money into fixing it because we have the new one, which is scheduled to come online December.
The old, the old part of the old high school is the oldest. It's built in 1895, I think. I think
Not 1995, 18.
I thought I said 18.
Maybe you did.
It was definitely 1895.
Okay. It's super old, right?
That would make it really old. Anyway, yes.
You've got buildings like the Edgely, the Brown, that are older. You've got sort of a more, the Argenziana, the Healy, not as old, the West Summerville. You have the East Summer, East Summer, which is a relatively new building, the CAP. And so you can't, when I say we're looking at the buildings, it's comprehensive. And, and the engineers have literally gone through space by space by space. They're looking at airflow, they're looking at
They're looking at classrooms and bathrooms.
Oh, classrooms, bathrooms, gyms.
Every, every space.
It's possible that parts of a building may be usable and not the whole building. We, people are going to need to be very, very flexible. What we know is it's going to have to be safety first, but there's, there's so many questions about that. So, and how do you prioritize kids? How do you do this? What spaces are going to be available? I was talking, I don't know, some reporter over the summer and she said, well, we'll just eat lunch at their desks. And I said, well, it's not that simple because they will all have their masks off while they eat. So even if you don't eat in the cafeteria, right? So then you, I said, you know, you have to think through things like, do you have them all in hallways? How do you space them out even more? Some of our out-of-district students who, there's transportation, right? So not only is it one-third of the students essentially on each bus, but then you have to have questions about if a student, are we going to take temperatures? Do you take it before the student gets on the bus? And if that student isn't able to go, who, do you take it when they come to a school? I mean, the magnitude of the details that our staff is going through is phenomenal.
Because if, if they get to the school and then they have a temperature, then someone has to, or somehow they have to get back home presumably.
Right. So part of the planning is also having expanded nurses' office. You need to have places to quarantine kids if they develop a fever during the day. We need to come up with the policies. We, at our next School Committee meeting, will be considering the vaccine policy in response to the Governor's Executive Order about the flu vaccine. We have already passed a policy, the emergency
So the flu, pardon me, but if you could just say, so that requires that all public school students have the flu vaccine? Is that what the Governor's order?
The Governor's Executive Order, it's, I believe it's college, private charter
Everyone?
parochial students. And I'm not sure about daycare. I'm not sure if there's an age. I actually, it's four or five pages. And I will be reading it before we consider it at, not this Monday, Labor Day, but the next Monday is the first full, the next full School Committee. But we've had to create policies, the emergency one-year leave policy. So we are trying to make it easy. We understand that each family has to do what they need to do. So we've just passed a policy that if you need to take a one-year leave from the Summerville schools, we will hold your seat for you, hoping in a year from now, we will not be in the same situation. So that we're trying to be flexible as we can with families and to hold our community together. I would say our student Monday night, Regina Botolo from the Enrollment Center gave us preliminary numbers. Summerville is less so, but still transient population. The numbers are very much in flux of students leaving the district, some students coming in. She did say that it was a number of our ELL students or immigrant families who are leaving the district, whether they're moving in with family, whether both parents are essential workers, some returning to their country. So it is, it is going to be very interesting to see what the, how this all plays out in terms of the student enrollment.
We only have a couple more minutes. Is there, do you have any announcements? And do you have any parting thoughts on things we all could do?
Yes.
To make this a better transition for ourselves?
I could talk about this all day. I actually do. First and foremost, be kind and assume that people are doing the best that they can. I have had to remind myself that as a parent because this is not easy for anyone. And, and if you're a student and you have been, you know, there's this progression that you expect to have happen and it, the whole world has been turned upside down. They can't see their peers. I think however you can reach out to another student, a family, I mean, and do it safely, we need to do that. I encourage families to reach out to their principals, to their teachers. You have questions, School Committee members, please, 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 reach out to us. Because it is, not only is it a whole new language, you know, the learning management systems that the state approved. And what does that mean? And what does it mean to homeschool? And there are people who are ready and wanting to reach out and to answer questions. So please don't sit home alone wondering. Reach out and any School Committee member, if we don't know the answer, we will find you the answer or put you in contact with the right person.
That is, that is all one can hope for from one's public servants. Well, this has been, the tone of this has been very different than I, than I thought it might be. Is there anything else you want to add about, do you have any predictions to share? Or things you think will change in the short term? Like, when will the high school be done and will the kids be back for?
The high school, with all of the adjustments for its delays, whether it was from COVID, the interruption of the supply chain, the, the reduction in the number of construction workers we could have there. It's still on track to be, the last meeting I went to, which was a week ago, December. So it's somewhere in there. I mean, the more we can bring on a building with exceptional ventilation, it would be helpful. But so much of this is, it's, it's really a public health, right? If the numbers start ticking up as the influx as the influx of, we're in a college town, how is that going to play out? I don't know. Are we becoming lax in our hand washing? What's, what, you know, I, Thanksgiving is the biggest holiday in our family and we've already made, we're not going to be together, right? It is, there's going to be moments where people are going to want to be together and just, and I understand that, but are we going to continue hand washing, masks, social distancing collectively? This is what I mean. Our lives are intertwined. If, if we can all keep going with that and we can get the virus under control and there's someday more coordinated testing at the state level at least. Those are all variables so beyond the, the schools that have a direct impact on whether, when we can bring kids back.
Well, we have to finish. I think that shows a vision though. It shows, it shows that what can happen, even if it's not quite happening yet. So thank you very much.
Oh, Sarah, always good to talk to you.
Yeah, you were amazing. This has been, I can't even say it, School Committee Update with Carrie Norman, Chair of the Committee. I'm Sarah Fishman. Have a good day.